To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome. Good to see you here tonight with us. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that? Excellent, thank you. We have an agenda before us. Is there any changes to that agenda that need to be considered before we... If there is none, then we have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling, is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, second. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We've got the city council minutes for June 20. Any concerns regarding those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they've been prepared and move to the special city council minutes for June 27. Same thing there, any questions or concerns regarding those minutes? Not, we will acknowledge those as well. And we'll go to the bills. We've got a warrant register with today's date on it. Concerns, anything?
Nope.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make my motion.
Mr. Sellers?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch, seconding. There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Takes care of the bills. Revenue and expenditure report from me. Same thing as the bills, any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve this report?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
Mr. Perks, Mr. Welling, seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's rude. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, what do you have for us?
Nothing, a nightmare.
Yeah?
I just wanted to say I thought it was a great Fourth of July. Hopefully, everybody enjoyed themselves. Thank Kim and the Parks and Rec for the festivities. And a reminder that the Evanston Youth Club has a fundraiser on Saturday. It's a golf tournament fundraiser, so they could use some more teams if anybody's interested in trying their hand at playing some golf. Raises some money for the youth club.
Perks!
Well, with a wet summer, I think the fire department enjoyed the fireworks instead of trying to put them out, so I think it was a good year. I enjoyed it. And I thank John and his crew for putting on the city's portion.
Excellent. Just, again, thanks Park and Rec. I think that was the biggest group you've had by far. The soccer tournament was fun and everything. The watermelon was fantastic. Then we got to cut 20 of them.
Is that how many we did? I never, I didn't count.
I think it was about 16.
16?
It seemed like 12.
You counted them, huh?
They went really fast. Yeah? Yeah, there's some kids gonna have problems, but ate a lot of watermelon. That and the, I drove around those areas that we shut down for the streets, and they were all cleaned up nicely this morning and looked great, so we ought to do that again. And thanks, Park and Rec. I know the ballfields get hit hard, but between you guys and Gordon's crew, it looked like they'd got it all done before nine o'clock, so it was like, pretty good work there, so thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Did all that, Parks and Rec did a great job. It was fun to be part of that, thank you. And then to thank the Porters for putting on a nice show like they always do. We had a great view of it, and it was, I think it was better than they've had, it was good or better than they've had in past years. Not that saying the past years weren't good either, but this one was really exceptional.
Yes, thank you. Dana?
Fourth of July was awesome. Hope everybody had a great Fourth. I was happy to have my son home, who was thrilled to be stateside and playing Captain America of Evanston outside on Main Street. If anybody saw him, yes, I made that. And just a reminder, if anybody has time or just an inkling to keep the restaurants in mind on Lincoln Highway, they're gonna be hit hard this summer because of the rodeo not being up and running, so we just need to keep them in our thoughts, and when we make decisions, try to put a little bit more attention over there, so we can keep those restaurants and those businesses afloat.
Thank you. I'll just add to that appreciation. Parks and Rec did an excellent job, as always. My grandkids enjoyed themselves, I watched them. I was asked how many watermelons we cut about halfway through, and I said, "Well, I didn't realize I was supposed to keep count, so I have no idea." It was a van load, I know that, but at any rate. And again, Porters did an excellent job, appreciate the Public Works and Police Department, all that, everything that goes into making for a successful Fourth of July in Evanston, that's a unique thing. I think people that come to town for the first time, they're in for a, in for a unique experience, there's no question. So appreciate everybody, and I appreciate the people being mindful of their neighbors. I don't, I didn't hear of any mishaps, I suspect maybe there was one or two, but I didn't hear of anything major, so I take that as a positive all the way around, so... But, good Fourth of July, thank you for everybody involved. We have some special, public hearing, special orders. The first there is an oath of office for a police officer. This is something that typically we do at the police department, but it's, so it's kind of a unique thing to do here to, tonight, but I just want to acknowledge that this is something that I, that I take pretty serious, and I appreciate our officers' willingness to take on this oath. Sometimes I don't know, or maybe we take for granted the, the promises, I guess, you're making to our community, and I appreciate it. I don't take that lightly. I appreciate your commitment to our community and what you're willing to do, and to help protect us and those that visit our community, so do I, should I come down? We've never done this here, so I'll come down there?
Yes, Your Honor. This is the counsel, this is Officer Gordon Medina, and he really doesn't have a place to call home, he's been in the Army Brad, he's a guy in the Army himself, and he did service as a scout, he was a rank staff sergeant, we're happy he's going Spanish, so we're excited for him, excited to get him.
You ready for this?
Ready, sir.
If you will say aye, and then repeat your name, raise the three, your right hand, and if you will say aye, then repeat your name.
I will only tell you anything I want.
Do you solemnly swear that I would support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States?
Do solemnly swear that I would support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming?
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And that I have not known if I had any law related to the election of my appointment?
And that I have not known if I had any law related to the election of my appointment?
Or caused it to be done by others?
Or caused it to be done by others?
And that I would discharge the duties of my office with fidelity?
And that I would discharge the duties of my office with fidelity?
Yes, sir. To my people. We are here to do that.
of a transfer for a liquor license. Ms. Kirby, I assume you'll be helping us with that hearing?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of the public, my name is Amanda Kirby, I'm the city attorney. We're now gonna open up a public hearing, as noted by Mayor Williams. First, we will have the proponent of the transfer of the liquor license come, approach the council, make any statements that they wish to do. Anybody who wishes to speak today will need to be sworn in, and will need to state their name and their place of address before doing so. But whoever is here to speak on behalf of this liquor license transfer, please approach the podium now. And there may not be, Your Honor, I don't, I don't...
We've got a gentleman here.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Please state your name and address for the record.
John Hazen, H-A-Z-N, address will be 339 Wasatch, Rock, here is the...
Can you raise your right hand for me, please? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, go ahead, sir.
We, we have liquor licenses in several states for over 40 years. So we just look forward to continuing to operate here at that. We have had never a violation, never. We had in Colorado, near Cedar Edge, we had a violation, it's a 10,000 feet, very far from the law, so we have, and we've not had a violation, not even a violation. So many years ago, we were pretty strict, and had a lot of businesses, and all were successful, and we're glad that we're here. All I have to say.
Any questions from Mayor or council?
I don't think I do at this point.
Is this the deal Knights Inn, is that where this is at?
And is there, I guess maybe I do, is there a change in ownership of the facility?
Your Honor, we actually want the facility, we actually need your approval, we need to see it, whatever it is.
Okay.
What's your plans with the restaurant? Just curious.
We're trying to figure it out, honestly. We had lots of plans when we started, we're having a little difficulty planning it all. I don't think we're owning it, so, so we're not full staff. We're just gonna have to work. I mean, we do, we do the job, we just send a lot of things, and we, we have benefits for a people workforce, most places, so we want to get a good crew of people together and continue other things. Any questions, I mean, please ask. I'm here, I've been in business for 43 years.
So are you the owner?
I am the owner.
It's not an LLC, or a...
No, the question is, it's owned by the LLC, and so it's Gibraltar LLC, actually Gibraltar is a little bit of LLC, so, and leases a two or five hundred here, and kind of, I'm not remembering my question, LLC. All it is is a LLC, you know, so that sees the way people do things, so, it's a good thing.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on behalf of this liquor license transfer?
I would like to speak. That's where she just...
I'm gonna protest, is that...
Yeah, sure. I don't know if it's good or not, but you can sure say whatever, whatever you'd like, yes.
Just turn, there's a switch on the top?
Yeah, is it on?
Hello.
All right. Hello. Can you state your name and address for me, please?
Donna Tolson, 701 12th Street, Evanston, Wyoming.
Will you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead, now.
Okay, Mr. Hazen, who we just heard speak, on behalf of the Knights Inn, which is no longer the Knights Inn, because he has changed it, but I am still the owner of the Knights Inn. Dennis Lynch, who sold the Knights Inn to John Hazen in the spring of this year, hasn't paid me off yet, and there is quite a bit of money owing to me. I do not know what they had going on together, but Mr. Lynch has left me out totally. $3 million is $3 million, you know, and I did not know this until Mr. Hazen's attorney in Idaho sent me a summons, and they are suing me for a release of the promissory note on the property. I am not gonna release the note. I am here to protest Lynch Consulting on the liquor license, because he doesn't own the property now. Mr. Hazen says he is the owner, but I am really the owner. Until we are, in, three of us are in litigation, my attorney is Spencer King in Jackson, Wyoming, Mr. Hazen's attorney is in Idaho, and Mr. Lynch's attorney is also in Jackson, Wyoming. We will have a hearing on July 26 regarding who is the owner in front of a judge here in Yewinta County. At this time, I don't think that the council should approve the transfer of the liquor license to, whether it's Gibraltar LLC or one of his other LLCs, or to Mr. Hazen. I don't think that the council should do that tonight, until we see what happens at the end of the month, on the hearing as who owns the property now.
I make a motion, table it, until we have true ownership figured out. Do we have documentation that we can do that?
May I speak? This is the deed, it's recorded. I brought it, there's no confusion. This is the deed. And why are we contesting the deed?
The deed has nothing to do with...
I'm not trying this here.
The deed has nothing to do with the promissory note that is still outstanding, that Mr. Lynch has defaulted on, and he still owes quite a bit of money. And somehow, Mr. Hazen and Mr. Lynch got together to count me out completely. In 2022, Mr. Lynch tried to defraud me by saying he got an SBA loan for $1.875 million, and he wanted me to sign over the hotel for that money. He had Mr. Phillips, who is an attorney here in Evanston, draw up the paperwork for this, and send me the paperwork. I did sign the promissory note away, thinking that it was an exchange, and this is in the paperwork, that I was getting my money for the release of the promissory note, and then Mr. Lynch could do whatever. But that did not happen. I signed the documents, sent them back to Mr. Phillips's office, and there was no money. And money did not go into my fidelity account, it did not go into my bank account, it didn't go anywhere, because there was no money. He lied. Then, all of a sudden, he transfers the deed into 212 Investments, another LLC of his, trying to make it look like he was on the right for doing something different now, but leaving me out totally.
Is this relevant to the liquor license?
Yes, it is.
May I speak in private?
Sir, just relax a minute. We're still in the middle of a public hearing. You'll be given an opportunity to speak if you'd like. Ms. Kirby's handling this, so this is, we're still in the middle of a public hearing, so...
So, at that time, there was another party interested. He's been telling me this for three years. He's got this party, that party, this party, that party, this party. All they wanna do is get paid off, you do whatever you wanna do. Somehow, Mr. Hazen came into play, who is the broker for Mr. Lynch on the property, and has been the broker since, I'd say, March of 2022, until they did the purchase in March of '23. So we are all in litigation, and I am here tonight to speak on this. And also, it is not a retail license, it is a resort license. The only one that is here in this county is the one that the Knights Inn has, or it's not the Knights Inn now, but until the hearing at the end of the month, I don't think that the council should go forth and do anything here tonight, until we see what happens. So that's, does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions for...
You, you mentioned that this is going to, is it district court?
Yes.
And what was that date?
July 26, 1:30 in the afternoon.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to say just one more thing.
I'm, I'm sorry, is there anybody else?
Forgive me, I'd like to say just one more thing. That is the, that's the, the real deed to the property. I am sorry, but she does not have a deed to the property. She is not, she cannot speak to you tonight and tell you that she is the owner of the property. That is a lie. What you have, what, what you have, what you have in front of you is the, is the deed to the property speaks for itself. I don't know all the story with her and the other owner. I do know this, that is, I own the Gibraltar savings, or excuse me, lending owns the property. We're not here to make false claim to you, and if I am, I'm a subject to perjury, and so, and so be it. I am not lying to you. She is.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak, either before, on behalf, or against this transfer? Sir, do you have something you wanted to say now at the podium? Counsel, do you have any other questions, or are we ready to close the public hearing then?
I think, unless there's something else, I don't see any reason not to close it right now. I've got some questions, but we'll, we can close the public hearing.
Unless there's anyone else who'd like to speak, at this time, I will close the public hearing on the liquor license transfer from Lynch Consulting, EBA Knights Inn, to Affordable Inn and Restaurant.
Thank you. Do you need to see this? Well, I don't know that we've, we've had this kind of an issue brought before us, before tonight. This is an interesting, obviously, there is some dispute here. Ms. Harris, is the, is the applications, are they...
The Wyoming liquor commission approved the application.
Approved the application? Does the, does the ownership of the property come into play? Maybe I'm looking for a legal, a legal, I mean, does this muddy the waters enough from our perspective that we, that we need to sit back?
I, Your Honor, is my opinion that the council is not in the business of solving or getting involved in private citizen disputes. We are tasked, the city particularly, is tasked with very few criteria that Ms. Harris goes over to see if somebody has met the burdens of applying for a liquor license, and that's, you know, generally, is one available, would it be suitable for the type of property, you know, that they desire to run, and, you know, are there any other reasons, I guess, if they maybe had a liquor license in the past, that they didn't pay on, or something like that? But those are the things that the city itself would take into consideration, and then it's sent to the state, and the state does check to make sure that all LLCs are licensed with the Secretary of State, and things of that nature. And that has been approved, so I think as far as our criteria goes, yes.
They take over everything on that application, it's upon...
So is it, is it, is it correct, I guess, to, for the city to, to... Obviously, this is, this is a serious issue. I wanna be calm, so both sides of that equation, but it's also, it seems as if it's a civil matter that is really out of our, our hands, one way or another, and it ultimately will be settled in the court...
Yes.
Down the road, irregardless of what we do here tonight?
Correct.
Okay.
My question is, how does the ownership of this liquor license sit? So is it just who owned it, who's, and it's a transfer, as far as ownership goes?
From Knights Inn to the Affordable Inn.
And that's an appropriate transfer?
Yeah, and there's no, no dispute on who owns it, who's transferring it, any of those type of things?
No.
Not the liquor license?
The license itself.
Okay.
If the courts find that this is, you know, is that gonna change things, that he doesn't really own it, or she has a lien, is that gonna affect this?
I don't know that for sure, but that would be something we have to, you know, communicate with the liquor commission about, that it's not included in the property.
Right.
This is a whole separate thing.
The license is independent of the...
It's its own separate property that can be sold and transferred separately from the physical, real property itself.
So I don't think it would, I don't think anything like that would change.
It's not gonna affect the outcome of whatever they got going on? So who is the owner, who was the owner of the Knights Inn? And you didn't transfer the liquor license to the new owner?
I transferred it to Dennis Lynch, when he bought it in 2020.
Okay, and you just haven't been paid, so...
I have not been paid.
So it's a civil matter, is what I can...
Was the sale of the liquor license involved in the sale of the property?
Yes.
That was...
I don't know. May I say something?
The public hearing is now closed, but if the council has a specific question...
Where, where, we wanna, go ahead. I'd be interested to hear what you have to say, sir, please, go ahead.
I, uh, just, I just, I, I don't have the, the votes, I don't have the...
My question finally is, is on here, is it has, hereby given on the 26th day of April, that 339 Wasatch Affordable Inn and Restaurants currently owned by Lynch Consulting and Investments. Mr. Lynch does not own that, he just got through saying he owned it. So if he owns it, how does Lynch own it? To me, that's a downright lie right there.
What is that paper that you've got, is that a clipping out of the newspaper?
This is the clipping out of the paper.
It's hearsay.
Oh, it's hearsay, it's right here in black and white, somebody had to put it in there, didn't they?
Gentlemen, 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 gentlemen?
This, yes, this is only pertaining, the city council's duty here tonight is not to determine who owns this real property. That is not at all in...
So what is this? This is...
That's the liquor license.
Right, so this is what's got to do with what you are gonna vote on, right?
That's just an advertisement. What you're reading there, sir, is just an advertisement that was in the newspaper, it holds no, no legal, just simply an advertisement, is that not correct?
Somebody had to put that in there, right? I mean, it's saying that Lynch owned it, and he doesn't, but that's all that is?
That's simply a newspaper notice that you've got there.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. I guess my, my question is, is, was the, from, from these people here, and I wanna be respectful of everybody, but was the transfer from them to whatever it was, Lynch Consulting, was that an appropriate transfer? Was that affected completely?
The transfer of the liquor license was.
So whatever documents facilitated that transfer have been appropriately signed and authorized, and whatever they get, recorded, whatever they get, irregardless of the financial component.
And there's no... And there's no MOU underneath that saying that if anything was to go awry, that liquor license goes back to anybody else? There's no MOU or anything on it?
Liquor license is totally subject from the property owner.
I know, but buy and sell the liquor license, so like when, there's other circumstances where there's transfers of liquor licenses with a MOU underneath that to say, you know, if something was to go different, that there's no MOU underlying any of that?
So that transfer was affected appropriately, albeit maybe without, uh, but claims of, uh, financial impropriety, whatever that might be, but that's, but the, the, the transfer was done completely?
Yes.
And there's no dispute there? There might be a dispute financially, that, a financial arrangement, but the, whatever documents needed to be signed to effect that transfer have been signed and appropriately executed?
He was issued a liquor license for a few years in a row when he served Lynch was. So he, he had the license.
Any other questions?
I have a ton. I just don't know how to phrase them.
Yeah, it, 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 obviously, there's some serious issues that, that you folks need to work out, and hopefully, in district court on the 26th, will help you sort all of that out. But quite honestly, I think this matter, as far as the liquor guy, the license goes, is independent of that. And, and either way, it's not something for us to delve into as a city. We hope that you can work out a, uh, but, work out the situation with district court, but I think it's, it's something independent of what we might do here tonight. Uh, and I don't know if that supports or, or, uh, hurts either one of your causes. I, I, that's why it's a civil matter. It's not something that we have jurisdiction over at this point. The liquor license transfer is certainly one of them, but I think that's independent of the conflict, uh, between, uh, between you folks. And I, I hope you can, can work that out. That's, anyway.
Mr. Lynch made a motion to table. Are we still going to consider that?
Yeah, I make a motion, we table it until the end of the month or next month, until we have a clear picture on the whole rest of the story here, just to be safe. I just have memories of a liquor license at one of Ray years ago, and I'm not, I'm not comfortable going with it tonight. I think it needs to wait until we have more answers.
Second that motion.
Okay, you've got a motion to table. Mr. Lynch, you've got a second. I'm Mr. Sellers. Any discussion? I do, I do think they're separate issues, myself. It, it's a difficult, uh, position to be in, but it looks to me like it's a civil matter between these folks, and I don't know that it's anything for us to, to necessarily inject ourselves into, but, uh, but I, I recognize that there's definitely some concern. So, we've got a, any other discussion?
I guess my biggest concern is, everything looks good here, but then if the judge somehow does say that, uh, that liquor license and the property were part of that sale together, like, that judge could come back and say, hey, that wasn't proper property to be transferred, and, but I guess that would be documented in court documents, and we just have to do whatever necessary at that point to fix it, right? If that was the case? I guess I'm asking you more than anything.
Well, I'm just going to write, make a recommendation. If you're going to table it, I would advise you pick a certain date, because it will not be decided by your next date. And if you just table it, you have to address it at your next council meeting. If you don't, table it until a certain date. And you may not get, likely will not get an order from the bench on July 26th, so you'll be waiting for a written order or another court date. So, give yourself some time.
The liquor license does not go with the property.
I know.
You can transfer the license from location to location. So it's not tied to that property at all.
And even if there was an MOU that said, if you don't pay me this money, I will then obtain an interest in your liquor license, that would still be a civil contract between two parties that the city's not bound by, that they would still have to work out in court or settle between themselves.
That's what I'm saying. But if there was a court order saying, some judge ordered that that needed to happen, how would that come back to us?
Then we would go back to the liquor commission, and, and we would handle it. But there is no court order in front of us right now telling us that anything's different than what they've already approved.
That's what I'm saying. So everything's in order. So, I mean, if we were to table, we're just pushing it to the next council meeting to have the same discussion, probably.
Well, there's a motion, there's a motion to table. Would you, Mr. Lynch, would you like to, I mean, if we're looking at dates in August, the 1st and 15th are the meeting dates. If you would like to maybe consider amending your motion to include one of those specific dates?
I would amend it to our second meeting in August, which would be the 15th.
15th. Mr. Sellers, would you...
I'll second.
That amendment is okay with you? Okay, we've got a motion to table this until August 15th. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, this is a motion to table. All in favor, say aye.
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 Who had the ayes?
Two.
Aye.
Both of you? And all opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
So four to three? So that'll be tabled until, tabled until, uh, 15th of August. Thank you all. Okay. Now we'll, so we'll move on to that. Go on to our consent agenda. We've got, uh, two items there, parade route and a limited malt beverage permit. Is there anyone here wishing to speak with regard to any of these consent agenda items? One of them's a Zone 5 racing for a bike race on the 29th of July. Is this a new race, or is this something we've done before?
Something we've done before.
Your Honor, members of the council, this race has been done for passing in three or four years.
That's what I was thinking when I...
It starts, it really has nothing to do with that. It starts on campus, it's a...
Okay.
And it does pass through the city on this.
Okay. Where do they end up? Mike?
Uh, I believe it's part of the city, and they don't go yet.
So they, this is the one that turns off on City View and... They go out Yellow Creek. And they go out Yellow Creek.
They have a brew set in the correct center sometimes at the watering station.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then the other one is, uh, just the Brew Fest. I assume that's the same, same plan as in previous years?
Yes, sir.
For Brew Fest? Okay, deep on. Do you have a motion on our consent agenda?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks?
I'll second it.
Welling, seconding? Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Our consent agenda is approved. We will now go on to unfinished business. And we will, uh, ordinance, start there with ordinance 2303. Ms. Kirby, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance 2303 is an ordinance of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, naming an unnamed roadway located on city property as described and set forth on the map attached here to you. And this is a third and final reading.
Thank you. Any changes to this ordinance since the beginning? And I think it looks the same to me, but...
No, Your Honor.
You want to talk? Questions before we move on? Is there a motion to approve this ordinance on third and final reading?
I'll make that motion, and I'll second.
Mr. Welling with the motion. Mr. Sellers, seconding? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? This is approved on third and final reading.
They said they were tired of coming to these council meetings, so...
Congratulations.
We couldn't blame you if you were.
Yeah. Thank you.
Your, your dad very much deserves it, and it was an honor to take care of him for all the years I did.
Ordinance 2304. Ms. Kirby, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance 2304 is an ordinance of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, amending section 2, 12, 2, certain provisions of the Uniform Act regulating traffic on highways to the city code. To amend, it includes statutory provisions for clarification and to avoid duplication. This is also a third and final reading.
Okay, there again, there are no, from the beginning, the same, same document we've considered from the... Is that right?
Yes.
Any questions on this from the council before we move forward? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2304 on third and final reading?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks, seconding? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That passes third reading. New business, a motion to authorize the sale of a handgun to retiring police officer Brandon Nelson. Chief?
Yes, sir, members and mayor, members of council. Obviously, Detective, uh, School Resource Officer Nelson retired last Friday. He's expressed an interest in purchasing his handgun. Uh, we traditionally have sold handguns to the officers as they retire. The Sergeant Sean Stalls determined the value of the firearm to be at $667, including the optic on it. And the request is that we allow Brandon Nelson to purchase his handgun.
Seems, seems appropriate to me. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
You guys in stereo.
Stereo, wasn't it?
Mr. Welling, I'll do...
I'll take a second.
Mr. Lynch, are you seconding that? Got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Tell him thanks for his service.
Yes.
I wasn't aware he was leaving.
He seems young. Retiring, doesn't he?
That, that job makes you old, though. Yeah. Mike, Mike's only 40.
I'm 35.
What are you talking about? Ain't 40?
Then I'm guessing you got to fill that new SRO position, huh?
We do. We haven't, luckily, it's summertime, so we kind of waiting to start our selection. We still have to hire, and I don't want to make patrol short right off the bat. When school isn't started yet, we'll need to give some time to train, but it is, it is a process.
Excellent. Need further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? There we go with that.
Thank you.
Our next item is a motion to accept Evanston Police Department's transfer of surplus equipment to the Unicity Sheriff's Office. Somewhere I've got that list. Chief?
Yes, sir, member, mayor, members of council. This is, uh, for, the largest piece of equipment is a 2008, I believe, Dodge Durango. Uh, we're going to strip all the decals off it, remove the license plates, but leave the vehicle fully equipped with the radio, radar, light bar, cage, and all the equipment that we have installed in the vehicle is, it is an older vehicle. It's a vehicle that we would take the time to completely strip and surplus sale it. I don't think the vehicle bring us much money. Uh, the sheriff's office has expressed they can still utilize it for their detention facility and get some more public use out of it. Same with the additional items. There's, uh, some ballistic helmets that are over 20 years old. Homeland Security's purchased us new ones. Uh, body armor, same, it's expired, but the sheriff's office does not have this kind of equipment, and they can benefit from it and continue use going forward. And, uh, two 37-millimeter, uh, Sage, basically less lethal gas guns that we have, um, more superior product in our inventory now and no longer have use for these older items.
Seems...
They just launch gas, or do they?
They can either launch, uh, gas or a baton round, less lethal baton round.
Mike's on to take one.
Do what?
Take the baton round.
Well, I think it's, I think it's great to be able to support the sheriff's office a little bit, give them some equipment that we're no longer using, and have them get some more use out of it. I think that's a, I think that's a great, great idea.
Thanks, sir.
Is there a motion on this transfer?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Perks?
I'll second.
Mr. Anderson? Lynch, seconding? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's excellent. That's approved, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Resolution 2350. Ms. Kirby, read that title for us, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 2350 is a resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the request of additional funds with the United States Department of Agriculture, Agriculture, Natural Resources Conservation Service for the Bear River and Yellow Creek Watershed Project.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a ongoing project that we're, that is in design. It's the irrigation ditch that goes through town. Uh, we're working with the NRCS to pipe the ditch and to get the storm water that we dump in the ditch to go to the river instead of into this irrigation canal, thus separating us from the ditch company that owns the irrigation ditch. Um, we've been notified by the Army Corps that with some rule changes, there are some wetlands that need to be mitigated in this project, which is going to cost us more money and extend the, um, design deadline and put us out further too, so...
Where's the, where's the wetland that they've identified?
Virtually where it comes out of the river, from the river to the, where it gets onto the hillside, there's some wetland area there that, um, old rules said we're okay, and new rule says we're not. So now we have to go after more money to mitigate the wetland area.
Even though that wetland's created by the canal?
Yes.
That's, okay.
But once it's piped, the wetlands could change, and that's what they're looking at.
So we created a wetland that we need to protect now?
Yes, sir. Basically.
And I'm sure they consider it navigable.
Guaranteed.
What's that?
Guaranteed.
Yeah.
Wow. Well...
Yeah.
So, this is, um, authorizing the mayor to sign a letter to, uh, the NRCS to, um, go after more grant money to take care of the mitigation.
Okay. Holy cow. Well, it's, it's too bad, but I guess that's, they kind of got us. But is there an introduction on this resolution?
Oh, I'll introduce with the motion passed.
Mr. Sellers? You're second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lynch? Seconding? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Resolution 2351. Ms. Kirby, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a resolution of the governing body of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a mutual aid agreement between the Evanston Police Department and Summit County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you.
Just on, uh, please, the purposes and what the benefits would be. Thank you, chief.
Uh, mayor and council. The, uh, Unicity Sheriff's Office currently has an MOU with Summit County. Unfortunately, sometimes they get busy or just don't have deputies on in nighttime, particularly in the wintertime. We find our officers have to respond in the Summit County to provide mutual aid services for car crashes or, uh, back up other officers. Because the mutual aid agreement is placed right now Because the mutual aid agreement is placed right now, is between the sheriff's office and Summit County, doesn't provide any protection to our officers. Unfortunately, when they get there, they're dressed as a law enforcement officer. People see them as a law enforcement officer, but they have no authority as a law enforcement officer, and that creates liabilities. This MOU with Summit County will give us protections for liability and also the individual officer when they do have to respond to this need. And I think it's important because it's members of our community that travel back and forth on these interstates that sometimes we have to respond to assist.
And vice versa. I'm sorry, between Summit County coming to assist us if we needed that as well.
Yes, that is correct. I'm sorry, left that out.
Is there a specific location or milepost that is the cutoff, or how far into Summit County do we?
No, we don't have a cutoff. It depends on the weather, time of day. Multiple factors.
But the mutual aid would cover both counties exclusively, the entire county.
They could come in. Not that they ever...
Yes. I said, when have they ever mutualized back?
Yeah.
This also includes going up the UNS too.
That's correct, and that can be a difficult time too.
Yeah.
Or if the sheriff's office had some problems with that.
Yeah. Few pursuits have gone that way in the wintertime.
They have, and Summit County's not in a position to respond.
Yeah. Now, they'd have to come around the mountain rather than...yeah. Yeah, I think it makes sense to me.
We're reworking our mutual aid agreement with fire and ambulance service with them right now, because it's not much mutual aid. It's us. So...
But I will say that we've always had a...
You need the protection.
We've always had a fairly positive relationship with Summit County. I mean, I really do think that that's the case. I've seen that myself.
And for this benefits the most is the public. They don't care who shows up as long as somebody gets there.
And like I said, many times they live in Uwenn County or Evanston, and they're on their way home or on their way out.
Actually, we have three Summit County deputies living in Evanston now, don't we?
Are we up to that many?
Yeah. Two or three. Two from sheriffs, one from PD, I think.
I'm guessing the sheriff's department...our sheriff's department has something similar, right?
They have the exact same mutual aid.
And their animal control officer.
That's it.
Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Mr. Lynch with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Welling? Seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved.
Thank you.
Resolution 2352. Ms. Kirby, please.
It's a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Kilgore Companies LLC, doing business with Lewis &amp; Lewis Incorporated, for the completion of all work required for the 2023 street overlay project.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
A little dosey-do with Mike here tonight. It's all right. This is an agreement with Lewis &amp; Lewis to do our overlays. As you'll recall, you approved or awarded the bid back in June for this. This is just a contract for them to get started.
Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
Mr. Sellers?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perk, seconding? Any discussion?
They're a Wyoming company, right?
They are.
Good.
Any further discussion? Are there none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thanks. 2353. Ms. Kirby, read that title for us, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, declaring the intention of the governing body of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, to annex a parcel of land located within the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 19, Township 15 North, Range 120 West, six Primoridian, United County, Wyoming, as more particularly described herein, and hold a public hearing.
Mr. Dixon, please.
Mayor and council, the city has received a petition from GTR Property Holdings LLC. It's a Utah limited liability company to annex property into the city. There are a few unincorporated islands located within the corporate limits of the city. This being one of them. Our comprehensive plan encourages when the time...when it's possible that these properties be annexed in. So, the property owner who owns this, it is highlighted, the section that's being annexed. It's 1.62 acre parcel. This person, petitioner, also owns the property adjacent to it to the east and just to the north. And I don't know if you can see the map or know the location. This property's located along Wasatch Road. It's just east of the intersection of Wasatch Road and Allegiance Circle and Independence Drive as well. So, with the petition, the city clerk, our city clerk and our city attorney have reviewed the petition for completeness with state statutes and have found that it does comply with the state statutes. The next step in this phase will be establishing a hearing date to consider the annexation. There are some findings that the council will need to review and go through to ensure that they meet state statute requirements. Those will be provided in a report at the public hearing. So, the public hearing, I believe this is part of this evening's...something for the city council to consider this evening is establishing a date, time, place for the public hearing as required by state statutes. The time that we are recommending is...our date is August 15th for that public hearing. So, the public hearing has to be done within 30 days of receiving and going through and verifying the completeness of the petition in no more than 180 days.
So, this resolution tonight would just simply start that process?
It should start the process to consider the annexation of the property.
Once this...you mentioned a few islands, and I know that they've existed for a long, long time. And I'm assuming that that...to the east there of that block, that yellow block, is that also one of them, or is that just something else? Is that also? See what I'm saying? That orange block to the east? Is that another one?
None incorporated by the...
Yeah. And then there's one here to the west, I see.
That's on the top. The orange one's on the top of Porter Road. That blue one's up on the top of Porter Road.
Right. Once we accomplish this, and this was finalized, how many of those islands still exist, do you know? Or will...or how many more will exist?
There's gotta be less than probably three or four.
I knew there were some. It'd be nice to clean all of that stuff up if we can. So, yeah.
Yeah. We've been kinda chipping away at it a little bit over the years.
What is zoned?
The current zoning of that property is a highway business zone. The property owner is looking at possible...he's talked about doing a possible residential use, and that would bring about possibly a zone change request, a change in our master plan, land use plan. That'll be for future time. Staff will be meeting with him to discuss that, his development proposal.
And this piece isn't like being subdivided out, right? That it's already blocked out as that one piece?
They are all parcel pieces that they own.
Okay. Is there an introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
I'll second.
Mr. Sellers with a motion. Mr. Welling, seconding? Discussion?
He owns that other piece also, that T-shaped piece.
Yeah. So, he owns this piece there, the T-shaped, possibly a piece that was back here. It's originally planned as a planned unit development, a purple sage planned unit development. It's possible that those future phases and that may not occur with the future proposal.
The rest of that is annexed, though. The rest of that is within the city limits of...
It is annexed in, yes.
Okay.
What's the rest of that zoned at?
So, there's a mix of zoning. Some years ago, we rezoned this section here to community business. And then the outside piece on the other side is a residential zone. This says highway business. So, there's a mix of zoning, and there...he's looking at doing a residential development.
Years ago, there's a big trailer court sitting out there.
Okay. Further discussion? There is none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2354. Ms. Kirby, read that title for us, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's a resolution of the City of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the acceptance of a proposal from Porter, Muirhead, Cornia, and Howard to provide the city audit services for the year ending June 30, 2023.
Ms. Lim?
Well, now that we have the budget set for '24, we're gonna go back and make sure we took care of '23 the way we were supposed to. And this is the engagement letter, they call it, with the auditors to come and make sure that we're doing it all correctly. There's not much that's changed each year. They might have different rules they've gotta audit. If we've spent more than $750,000 in federal funds, we'll have a single audit, which costs us a little more.
Which we have done.
Which we've done. Two years ago, we did that. So, there's really nothing new. They actually are not gonna come for pre-audit this year, which I'm pretty happy about. We still have information to get to them, but they're only gonna come one time this